This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 7th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning and Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to take one quick second and ensure, assure our city administration and our city council that we hope to see you and welcome you to the Law Enforcement Prayer Luncheon this Thursday at Cottage Hill Baptist Church. We hope you'll come. We've saved a table for you. If you're not there, we'll just talk about you, but hopefully you can, you can join us for a great way to start the new year. Let's pray together. Our Father, we give thanks to you today just because you are good. Thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus. Our city today gathers at its gates. We humble ourselves, mindful of the Scriptures. Create in me a clean heart, oh God, and renew a right Spirit within me. Would you bless our leaders, Father? Would you smile upon them and bless this great city in the days ahead? And we'll honor you in Christ's name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the gospel, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small. Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Here.
Statement, statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone. It's good to see you, everyone, this morning. Welcome to our council meeting, January 7th, 2025. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, a public hearing, and general item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to the council on another agenda must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on another agenda will not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will indicate that you have one minute to summarize. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the corner, that would be not under applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of January 2nd.
Second.
Proper movement, second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
Councilman Reynolds. Good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. Thank you for taking time to be at the city council meeting. First thing I'd like to talk about, and obviously if you came here, you know that if we've got severe cold weather presently, and we could continue on for the next two or three days. Special thank you goes out to the Waterfront Rescue Mission, who's helping coordinate the shelters for those who need it during these frigid times. Other participating shelters that are trying to make sure that nobody's sleeping out in the cold, in addition to the Waterfront Rescue Mission are the Central Presbyterian Church, McKinney Place, Salvation Army, Ryan's Refuge, and the Theater Church of God. Anyone who needs shelter during the cold can call 251-433-1847. That's 251-433-1847, or you can call 442-6018. Also, I'd like to say that the waived transit has agreed to be waiving fees on the fixed routes for anyone who needs transportation to these shelters. So I really appreciate that. Another thing I'd like to bring attention to is that our Office of Supply Diversity and Community Affairs will be hosting a free financial boot camp this Saturday. These boot camps have been proven to be very, very successful to those who are attending it. It's, as I said, this Saturday from 10:30 to 1:30 PM, and we'll be hosting a free financial seminar for mobiles at the Tobinville Branch Library. And what we do is we bring local experts to make the presentations, but it has to do with not only financial planning, but building credit, income tax preparation, saving for home ownership, as well as other items. Our partners in this, we really want to thank are the Bank of Alabama and the Mobile Public Library. We couldn't do it without their participation. Anybody who wants to know more about this, you can go to any of the City of Mobile social media platforms and find out more information. Don't know if you recognize that I saw it in the media recently, but there've been some major accomplishments for the Alabama School of Math and Science. Last month, the National, National School Ranking Organization recognized the Alabama School of Math and Science as the best public high school in Alabama, and that is an amazing feat, an accomplishment. It was also named the best STEM high school in Alabama, the best college preparatory high school in Alabama, and the 34th best public high school in the United States of America. Join me in giving John Hoyle, the president, and all the staff and the board of trustees for USMS a big round of applause. ASMS. So, let's see, that concludes my remarks, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
Second. Proper movement, second in the discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on February 8th from 6:00 PM until 9:30 on Airport Boulevard.
Proper movement, second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider rezoning property located at 5301 Moffett Road from B2 to B3.
This open to public hearing for this particular said item is in one present that would like to address the council on this item.
I don't know that I can appreciate, first of all, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I don't think three minutes will do it justice, but I'll give it a shot. My name is Patrick Howell. I live at 1516 Sawada Drive, which is directly behind the property in question that asking for the rezoning. Have no issue with the construction. I have no issue with the building that they want to build. The only problem I have, and I've just spoken to the engineer on the project, that is with stormwater drainage from this project during the project, not after it, not right now. The water from this project, it all runs into one culvert that runs between my neighbor, Emmanuel Brown, and my house underground to the lower level of the street on Sawada Drive that floods regularly from the stormwater off this property. Any change in the property management of the water will change where the water runs into an inlet up on the property. That water backs up into this one inlet. I've got pictures of it, and I know y'all don't do, y'all don't look at pictures. That's my mistake. I missed the, I missed the council meeting, the other meeting last month. But I, I am very serious about the issue with water. My house has had water in it from this very issue. George's house, George Houston lives on one side, Emmanuel lives on the other side. I don't want to move, guys. I want to stay where I am. I like my street. I've been living there.
One, one second, because your mic went out. Hold his time.
Is it, is it on?
Yeah.
Light on? I'm not, I'm not sure that it's, it's working.
I apologize.
That's not a problem. I get an extra minute. Anyway, seriously, it's, I appreciate y'all listening to this. This is so lame. I have, I have watched water run from this property through a drainage system that's outdated, and my neighbor across the street's yard floods, the street floods due to the excess water off this property. We've lived with that for 45 years. It happens randomly over the course of a year, four or five times. If the contractor or the people who do the site work associated with this property don't manage what they're planning on doing, the stormwater from this will damage George's house at 1520 Sawada Drive, my house at 1516 Sawada Drive, and Emmanuel's house at 1512. It already floods Bill, Bill car across the street at 1513 every time it floods, street floods. I don't know what else to tell you. I've got pictures to show you that y'all don't want to, y'all don't have the time it takes to go through these 10 pictures, but I have pictures of the street when it floods. There's an inlet in this, on the street level that, that because water can't pass that inlet on my, on my street level, can't get past it to run to Overlook Road, under Overlook Heights, backs up, water stacks up out of that drain, out of that inlet, as tall as me standing next to it, because the elevation of the property that we're planning on doing the construction in down to the street level is probably 10 or 12 feet, in about 150 feet. So the water backs up, it can't go anywhere. It goes out in the street, it backs up into this property. That's my issue. I don't care about, build the building. I'm happy to have you build the building. Just do your job, whenever you build, build this thing, the City of Mobile takes care of those inspections and make sure they hold their feet to the fire on doing what they're supposed to do. You're in my district, I look for your help. That's, other than trying to get you to, I may would like to meet with you sometime if that's possible. I don't know whether that's something we're supposed to talk about at this meeting, but I am concerned about it. There's four of us that, that is a group in our neighborhood that have this concern, and I'd like to be sure you're aware of the concern. Change the zoning, I don't care. Build the building, I don't care. Just do diligence whenever they do build it, when they do their site work. Site works, I've been in construction all my life. I'm sorry to explain, the site work is going to be a mess.
What is the address? What is that address?
1516 Sawada, S-A-W-A-D-A. Nobody knows how to spell that. I don't, I don't even know.
Mr. President?
And it runs off of overlook.
Ma'am?
Runs off overlook, Sawada?
That is exactly, off overlook. Racine.
If I could.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Howell, for coming, and thank you, gentlemen, for also being here today. I know that at least one of you was at the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes, George was.
Okay.
And the reason I'm here is I watched it on YouTube, and I was concerned that one of the, and I'm not sure if it was Mr. Smith or not, but he's, we've been talking, so he's very intelligent, very good guy, made the statement that there was no water issues on the property, and there are.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I certainly understand where you're coming from on that, and any new construction there would tend to cause water runoff, and so even with, I know retention, your fear is that there is still going to be some problems with water running back even more so than what is already happening, correct?
There are six parking lot inlets on this property. Two of those are going to be covered up by the construction. I know too much, and it scares me knowing what happens to a site when there's construction. Am I running over my time?
No, 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 you're fine.
I understand the, what happens on the construction site whenever they start. This is a large, about 60,000 square foot building. They're going to stir up some dirt. There's going to rain. How they manage those processes is probably the most important part of the whole project, and how they keep that stormwater from causing the damage that I'm afraid it's going to cause. It's an old ditch running behind this property that, that drains a lot of the water off of other properties not associated with the building construction site.
Ms. Gregory, I think that the mayor had to sit down to address, and I think that if you can communicate with the administration and also work with the constituent.
Ever ready?
It's the New Year bug, I guess. Yes. This is a first read on this today, and we have a public hearing on the first time. It comes before the council, so there is time to meet with you all, to get with the administration and the engineering department to discuss the issues that you're having now, and then what could happen with the construction and their plan to mitigate any of that prior to any approvals.
Please, that's excellent. I'd love to entertain that, it's a very good idea. Thank you.
So, so what we can do is set up a meeting with you all, with the administration and the developer too, so that we can all get together and talk about this.
I'm retired, and George works for the state, and Emmanuel works for, has a job with Home, not Home Depot, don't say Home Depot.
Mr. Howell, if you could give your contact information to our clerk?
Sure.
We will get back in touch with you, and we'll try to set something up.
Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks so much for coming down.
This is my first time.
Mr. Carroll?
Ms. Gregory is her district, but I've got a lot of experience with developments with the city from another point of view. Anytime a developer develops or improves a property that is existing, whether there are new structures on it, then no water is to go from one property to the next. It is either retained or detained, that's retention or detention, or it's sent out to the street into the street system. If it, if it cannot support that, then another drainage system or evacuation system is added to the site to improve the site. Normally, that is discussed and handled in the pre-development meeting with the city, with all the code enforcers and inspectors and all of that stuff, and the architect of the project. I'm pretty sure they've done that, if they've already gone towards the planning commission to handle that. So if they're done their due diligence already, then their new drawings will show all the improvements for stormwater. Now, during the process, there's a SWIP, that's Stormwater Protection Plan. That protection plan prevents erosion and also excess water from running onto adjacent properties or property owners around them. That plan has to also be approved by the architect and engineer record and also the city before the project can begin. And if it's not installed correctly, then we have enforcers that come out to protect both our drainage system and the properties, properties next door. So I would think before they put this out to bid, that all that stuff would have to be approved and regulated properly with our inspectors and code enforcement.
Yeah, I appreciate that a lot and greatly. If the, the issue is, is everybody does due diligence during the construction process. Y'all's part of it, I know y'all are going to take care of it. I'm not, that's not my concern. It's during the construction, they widened Moffett Road 20 years ago. George, my yard, Emmanuel's yard flooded because they changed the direction of the water, they didn't do what they, they were supposed to do. And that's all I'm asking, is people to do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
I know y'all are going to do it.
Council representative, she going to make sure she get in contact with you and keep you abreast of everything, okay? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you, thank you. I, I did understand what he was saying.
Despite what he said.
The city is going to take care of making sure that people's feet are held to the fire.
Yes, but, but I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page and that the residents who live next to it have a chance to speak with us and the engineers so that we all understand what's going on and what the requirements are.
Excellent, I couldn't ask for anything more.
Exactly. So, so we will be in touch with you all to set up a meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
As NY's president, I would like to address the council on this particular public hearing.
Bruce Smith, CMG, excuse me, 457 St. Michael Street, and I appreciate all y'all, and I appreciate Mr. Howell and getting a chance to talk with him earlier about their concerns about the, the stormwater during construction. Like Councilman Carroll said, you know, during the, we'll submit BMP and the SWIP and all that stuff, and we'll, we'll do the inspections to make sure that, you know, everything's in compliance through construction. You know, like they said, I don't believe they have an issue with the, the zoning of the property, just the construction, and, you know, we'll make sure that we do not have any, you know, we'll put fail safes up during the BMP process to make sure that we don't have any runoff creating issues downstream. So I'd love, if y'all set up a meeting, if we could be present to
Yes, we will.
Kind of help address those concerns so that we can, we can kind of plan for that when we get to the construction phase. We'd really like to be a part of that discussion.
Right, and, and we will. Since this is the first read, we will try to get the meeting set up sooner rather than later, but just know that depending on schedules, we may have to push the vote back a little bit, just to make sure that we get everybody together and everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, the sooner the better, but I, I understand absolutely, but if there's any questions that y'all have as far as the development of the rezoning for, for me, I'd be glad to answer any concerns that y'all have.
Yeah, I think mainly with the residents who back up to where this, this property is, I mean, you're asking for an upzoning. They say they don't have a problem with the, the building itself, so that is an upzoning.
Yep.
The main problem appears to be the stormwater and especially during construction. You know, a lot of times because we get so much rain here. The best laid plans, you know, the best mitigation, we still have problems.
Sure.
And so we, we need to take a look at their problems as they currently exist, and then look at what may happen, could happen during the construction phase because water runoff, I mean, sometimes you just can't stop it. So we need to do the best we can before we start approving and construction.
And like I said, we won't be able to fix all their stormwater issues, but we certainly want to help.
Right, and you just don't want to make them worse.
That's right, we don't want to make them worse, absolutely.
Well, we appreciate that, and we'll be in touch, and I'm sure we've got your contact information.
Yes, yep.
If not, if you don't mind getting with our clerk.
Sure.
So that we can contact you as well.
All right, thank y'all so much.
As NY's president, I would like to address the council on this particular public hearing. If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Mobile Youth Council Drug Education Council.
Good morning. I'm Banda LaPierre with the Drug Education Council, and I have with me today our youth council, and they will give you their names and their school.
My name's Sam Hecker, I go to McGill.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kirsten Cunningham, and I attend Bogart High School.
Good morning. My name is Morgan Carroll, and I attend McGill Tulane.
We are here today, we wanted to inform you all and to invite you guys to come to our youth summit. It's going to be held on Thursday, January 23rd. It's going to be a Gup Quest. We're going to be talking about vaping as well as fentanyl, and we are inviting all of the high schools to bring with them eight students from each school. These young people will come, and they will hear from experts in the field, and then we will give them an opportunity to go and, and partner with their schools so they can make plans of what they can do to take back to their schools, to make their schools safer and drug-free. So we wanted to come down today to invite you guys and ask you to please, if you can, come and be a part of us, and when we're finished and we get the, all the results back, we will come back and give you those results as well. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions come in from the council? We appreciate everything that you all do for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Let's begin, please, with the Mobile Civic Center. We understand that this has been transferred to the Supreme Court of Alabama, and I believe that's because it's set in a state precedent as it pertains to land grabs. We understand that if something is transferred on its own from this body and not appealed from parties, that this is something that could impact the entire state of Alabama. I want to bring to the attention of this body, Mobile City Code Section 44-8A, subsections 4 through 5, and 44-8B, subsections 5 through 6, which is about protecting our heritage and culture within a historic district, and it, it requires that a completed site plan is in place and proof of funding. Now, we heard this morning from the Finance Committee Chair that we'll be meeting today to update this. Now, we know that these things have to be in compliance before a certificate of appropriateness is awarded. This was done on June 5th of last year. Yet we're going to meet today on January 7th to update to see if any of these things are in compliance. So this is why this has been taken to this stage, and I hate to continuously bring this to this, to this forum, but when the media has been somewhat strangled from actually presenting and partially the news, this is what we have to do. So I would suggest that we look at a new theater and, and actually renovate in the arena. We know that we want to send off as a good legacy, I get that, and we know that people love to have their name on these structures, well, this is the way to do it, and I believe that if you poll the City of Mobile, they would rather have this, and so we can have hundreds of millions of dollars in place to actually tackle our priorities. So let's look at public safety, please. The Minneapolis City Council recently agreed to the federal regulations, the federal regulations for police oversight after the George Floyd disaster. Events following the unlawful termination of Chief Prime, coupled, coupled with extreme irregular practices suggests we may need to explore the same thing here. For now, though, ensuring that additional training is best plausible and most prudent. The reason I say this is because we know that we've issued illegal citations, and as well, we know that we've had this investigative software and cybersecurity measures where we've actually moved resources, and we have no idea what's going on with any of it. Let's look at the budgeting, please. Do we have an update on the vehicle inventory list, evaluation of creative positions, obtaining legal consultation outside of our legal department, the unassigned fund balance, the general fund reserves, the unallocated fund balance? Are we doing anything with these additional resources to tackle poverty and look at our public housing and our affordable housing issues? And this infrastructure, we have the gentleman from District 7, this reminds me of what Ms. Law came about speaking on District 2. We need to put more resources into our drainage. These are the things that actually matter versus the sidewalks and these other renovations and other ideas that might not be the best. Now, the communications, earlier this month, I sent something that amended Section 2-62, which was asking that we have actual formal responses in writing when people come before this body. As well, it's like we were seeing the rules kind of being broken with this back and forth dialogue, and these are things that we don't have to really look at if we're able to put these in writing within the laws that exist. Now, let's look at this last part.
Time has expired.
May I have a disammit like the
In one granted.
There's only one, there's only one, one matter left.
No, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Belina Green regarding Resolution 03001.
Apostle Belina Green, the Downey Bay community, good morning, mayor's, mayor's office, council, women in leadership that are represented here today in council office and mayor's office, and the ones that are represented that's inspiring the truth that I speak for, and the ones that could not speak, I represent in the body of Christ. Now, I, concerning something that was introduced, I have a problem in my constituents, my community, has a problem with nepotism. We already have, we already have
Which, which one do you sign off for?
It's a resolution that was introduced, where we were putting family members in council positions again.
What? That was last week.
It's not on this agenda, so, yeah, thank you, Ms. Green, for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
CIP resolutions held over 08010, approved purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for LED luminaries for traffic engineering, 13011, authorized change order number two with John G. Watson Construction Company for 2018 pay go.
So moved.
Second.
Prop the move in second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over 401026, declare the structure at 2377 San Sushi Road, a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Move to table. Second. Prop the move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Resolutions held over 01012, authorized cost sharing agreement with Park Building for wet woolly sidewalks, 08013, approved purchase order to Hardy Chevrolet or Chevrolet Tahos, 08014, approved purchase order to Imperial Bag and Paper for recycling totes, 08015, approved purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for electrical harness for ladder trucks, 09016, transfer funds from Tremere Park Football Stadium to CIP Parks, Taylor Center and Pool, 09017, transfer funds from Capital Project 2025, our top grant, Master Project, our top 2025 for grant, master traffic signal improvements, 21018, authorized contract with TTL for 2025 CIP Aslava Creek, 60019 and 020, authorizing settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Prop the move in second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, 64001.
Per council rules, this will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 58021 through 58022.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Prop the move in second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Consent resolution, yeah, consent resolution 58021 and 022, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean groups 79 and 82.
So moved.
Second.
Prop the move in second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced, 08023 through 6029.
By council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Announcements.
District 6, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanna announce that in the process of trying to set a date for our next District 6 meeting, hopefully we'll have that, have that this week for announcement for next week, but just be on the lookout for that in the newsletter and also social media and then through mailers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna take just a few minutes and do a little bit of public transparency here since it's aggravated my daughter who's sitting in the audience today. Morgan, don't let that bother you, okay? You're a seventeen-year-old child that gives of your time freely. Any position that you're appointed to in the city or with leadership or with children, that's a free position. You don't get paid for it. It's your time and when you're asked to serve on it, whether I appoint you or another council person appoints you, that's honorable. So when somebody attacks me because of appointing you to. When they attack me for appointing a child to something, that's an abomination, especially when kids are on the street doing things that they don't supposed to be doing, having a hard time out there fighting everything, that's an attack on a child. And I think that is just a personal abomination for anyone to do that. I thank you for giving of your time for everything that you do for this city, 'cause you're not just on that board, you're on other boards that other people have appointed you to and we thank you for that. So don't ever let anybody discourage you from keeping to do the things that you do for this city, okay? Thank you. Now, again, it's a new year, District 2, we're moving a lot of things. I hope that everybody in the district is noticing all the increased activity that we have on Augusta, Charleston, Panetta Street. As promised, we've finally gotten to the sidewalk improvements and the ramps. We've had that money stashed away now for about a year. We've finally gotten to those. We're also on Church Street and the other places on Church Street and all those things are going. Look forward to the paving and repaving of Hanan, South Hanan, McGill and all of those streets in that area around Little Sisters of the Port, that has been done and we're moving forward with that. An update on the housing improvement plan, we've hired an executive director, we're just about ready to start the new construction of those houses over there. We're going through some title clearing on those properties and getting those ready to go. Hopefully we'll have that done soon. We're in the process of hiring a project manager to will those fundings, a million dollars from the mayor's office and another three million dollars from my office that have been set aside to do neighborhood revitalization in those neighborhoods. It's been a long time coming and hopefully we're gonna get that started soon. Also, on the 18th of January, we have a cleanup, a Martin Luther King Day of Service. Our target area is gonna be Anne Street to Rollins, Glennon and those streets in that block or in those couple of blocks that we like to concentrate on. There's, as we know from the old club at Anne over to Rollins, there's a lot of trash in the streets that we need to be picking up and to monitor ourselves on. We're spending a lot of time and effort in trying to reclaim, revitalize and reopen that neighborhood to serious redevelopment and enticing people to live there and be comfortable where they live, especially the people that are already living there. So as we move this year forward and do all the things that we have done, but continue to do even more things that we haven't done in the past, Happy New Year to each and everyone. Look forward to working with you this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District 5, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee today at 1 o'clock PM in the ninth floor conference room, City Council Conference Room on the ninth floor of this building. And this meeting will be to get an update from the administration on the construction and financing plans for the new Arena Civic Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. District 4, Councilman Reynolds. District 1, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for everybody that came out today. I wanna give a big shout-out to the Mobile Youth Council and the staff, let's give them a big hand. They're doing an amazing job, they have young people who volunteer their time to serve in the community, that's amazing. So thank you to each and every one of you all for taking that time to serve our city and our community. It's just amazing to see young people and to see any young people that serve in any capacity, so thank you so much for providing that service. And I just wanna join in with my colleagues, Councilman Carroll, and just let you know, Morgan, we voted you in and so I see the work that you provide throughout this city and I definitely support you, so you're an amazing young lady and both of you all, we support you all as well, so thank you so much. Again, let's give them another big hand for the amazing work that they're doing in our community. I wanna join in with the mayor and just remind you all about the amazing event that's taken in District 1. I wanna truly thank the Office of Supplier, the Diversity and Community Affairs for putting on the Money Move Boot Camp that will be held in District 1 at the Tomaville Library a place that I visit when I was a kid, now they moved, so I went at the new location, but I visit a long time ago when I was a kid, but I'm so excited that they are providing these services for our people in our community, for credit repair, credit building, homeownership and money-saving tips and so much more. So we're inviting out the community to come out, level up in your finances on January the 11th from 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. And you can get information on our social medias, on my social media, the City of Mobile social media, so get that information, you can sign up, share that information, tell a friend, tell a family member to come out on January 11th and let's level up together. I also wanna join in and kinda talk about some of the things that are taking place in District 1. We're excited, you're probably seeing so much work taking place throughout District 1 with roads being paved, infrastructure, we've got a new playground taking place at Figurs Park, which a lot of people thought never would take place. And then we have Highway 485, I call it the gateway to Mobile. You're gonna see sidewalks, you're gonna see new paved streets, something that people dreamed about. So a lot of money is being spent in District 1, probably something you never thought before would take place, but it's happening. So more information, more things are taking place and I'm just excited to serve as a serving leader in District 1. Again, to District 1, I love you, let's move forward together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and Councilman Penn. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to join in with my colleagues in thanking the youth council for coming today and certainly thank Vanderlin and Virginia for being here and continuing to host this group of young people. And for anybody who's listening, I have a vacancy in District 7, so if there are any young people, any high school students who are interested in serving, please reach out, we'll be putting the information in my newsletter, so hopefully we'll have somebody really soon. Also, the Day of Caring is coming up, that's January 18th and we will be meeting at the VOA on Ziegler Boulevard. Again, we'll be going through the Ziegler area, Athie Road and some nearby places, Cody Road, to pick up litter. That is part of what we have done for the last eleven years or so, clean up the community. In this Day of Service, we provide service to our neighbors. So any volunteers out there, please join us, we have information online, it's in my newsletter, it's on Facebook, just register, come, sign in at 8:30 and be with us to go out and pick up litter. And I just warn you, it's always cold, for whatever reason, it is always cold on January 18th when we do this, so bundle up and just be prepared with good, comfortable walking shoes. Also, over the holidays, some residents reached out to me because they didn't realize that Christmas being on a Wednesday and New Year's Day being on a Wednesday, their garbage was not going to be picked up. You know, those of us who've been in the city for a long time kind of understand what the process is. If you, if your garbage falls on a holiday, Saturday is the makeup day, not the next day. Unfortunately for the folks who are new citizens, not everybody understood this and it's understandable. So when they reached out to me, I reached out to the administration to make sure that everybody was aware and to try to provide that information to our new residents. We are sending out a letter to Kings Branch and Orchard Estates to make sure that they all know that the next time, you know, this is what the holiday schedule means and they can reach out to me, they can call 311, find information online. We just want them to know where to get the information so that they are not frustrated again when their garbage isn't picked up on the day they expect it to be. So, you know, we apologize, I know the administration, I worked with Shonda Smith, we will do a better job of getting that information out in the future because it happens to every neighborhood, but those who are new citizens are especially impacted because they're just not as used to the process. Also, we've talked about a lot of work going on, this is our capital improvement plan in action all around the city and it's happening in District 7 as well. We've got resurfacing, we've got concrete repairs going on, infrastructure work throughout the district. Equipment has moved out to the Japanese Gardens, so they will be closing down shortly to make those improvements in the parking lot and build the trail out, so be looking for that. And still looking for very soon to start the dredging in Langen Park and we will certainly keep you posted on that one because that will be an exciting day for those of us who've been waiting on this for a very long time. So thank you, Mr. President.
President?
Yes.
If I could, and I appreciate Councilwoman Gregory pointing out the issues having to do with the garbage, if the day your garbage is picked up turns out to be a holiday, it's sometimes, it's not always on Saturday that it's gonna be picked up. No, 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 there are some, there are some folks that have their garbage picked up like on a Tuesday, there are some days where it's gonna be the day before the holiday. So it's important, it's important if your garbage is supposed to be picked up on a certain day and that day turns out to be a holiday, you need to go to the city's website and look at when it will be picked up because it's different depending on what day your garbage is picked up.
Which, again, is why we need to make sure that they understand where to go to find the information because it gets a little confusing for all of us. So we'll be sending out those letters to give everybody the information on how to find out when their garbage and trash will be picked up.
Is that correct, public works director? Yes or no? That's correct? That's correct. Go to the website. It's up for the whole year now and they can also call 311 if they're not familiar with the website, okay? So the whole calendar is up on the website right now for the whole year and if you're not familiar with the website, you can always call 311, okay? And greetings to the citizens of District 3, I'm always proud of all the schools in District 3, but I still would like to recognize Mertz Elementary School, I had the opportunity to visit and actually celebrate with them on last Thursday evening at the Calor J as they had celebrated receiving a perfect, a perfect score of 100 on the state report card. And it was a milestone for that school, it was a milestone for the district, it's a milestone for the Mobile County Public Schools. Again, congratulations to the principal, Mrs. Wells and all her staff and administration over there, they're making our school system look good. And I will come next week with some more important dates of meetings in District 3. Is anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn.
I also wanna give a big shout-out to the school in District 1 that made it 100, O'Shea Road, in District 1 made it 100 as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Cop a cat, but also let me, also let me cop a cat off of Councilman Carroll and Penn and also Gregory, thank you all, you group for coming out and also thank you all so much for the volunteer work, you know, anytime that you're doing great things, people try to come and attack you, but that's just part of life, you know, Jesus got attacked it, you gonna get attacked it, okay? Thank you all so much. In other discussion, all in favor? All opposed? This means adjourn.